Good morning. I would like to call to order both the adjourned regular meeting and the special meeting noticed for today. Mayor Yudi is attending via Zoom today, so he has asked that I chair today's meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... two of the United States of America, and in the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd-Groning?
Yes.
Councilmember Taub?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
And Mayor Yudi?
Here.
The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public comment. At this time, the public may address the city council and items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting's agenda. To ensure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into the microphone. Please note that all comments are limited to three minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how the public comment will work for each agenda item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. For each item on the agenda... Okay. Can you guys hear me? Oh, there we go. Much better. Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. All comments will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by staff. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on the item. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofstanmarino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these emails before the public comment period for the particular item ends. The comments may be summarized if necessary to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then clicking on Raise Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item.
Thank you. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not have any requests for comments.
Thank you. There is some complexity between the items on the regular meeting agenda and the special meeting agenda, so I will now ask the city manager to offer us that explanation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good morning, councilmembers. If you'll indulge me for just a moment, I just want to be sure that the agenda is understandable, especially to members of our community who might not understand why we have two agendas happening simultaneously this morning. I know that it looks a little bit complicated. However, it really is, it's very straightforward, so I'm going to try to explain that. As you know, you have four items on the regular agenda. The first two are finance-related. The third is related to economic development weight-bearing program, and the fourth is the purchase of license-plate readers through grant money. The special agenda item is also a finance-related item, and I like to think of it as Agenda Item One and a Half, in terms of today's agenda this morning. Agenda Item Two is part of your budget process. It's Finance Director Chung's final report on the last fiscal year. This is a report on our current fiscal status, and it also serves to situate you for the future in terms of the future financial forecast. As it relates to last year, as you know in your staff report, Finance Director Chung has reported that we closed the year with a surplus of $3.4 million. The council has previously directed that we return to you every year at this point when we have a surplus number, so that you can take action to move that surplus into the capital fund or do whatever else you'd like to do with that money. Since we know that we have that $3.4 million surplus, the time is right for us to recommend other options for what you might want to do with that money. That brings us to Agenda Item One, which presents the option to you of opening a Section 115 trust to manage our OPEV liabilities. OPEV, of course, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. As Finance Director will, of course, remind you, this is not related to our pension. This is a separate benefit. That, for us, is retiree health insurance. Finance Director Chung will explain all the reasons why he believes it's in our better financial interest to open an irrevocable trust and put money aside for its liability in a way that can potentially generate significantly more in interest than our normal investments are permitted to, rather than leave the money liquid in our capital fund where it will accrue significantly less interest. The choice in front of you this morning, of course, for Agenda Item One, is whether you'd like to proceed with opening a Section 115 trust or not, and if you do, how much money you'd like to allocate to that. In the event that you do decide you want to open a Section 115 trust, the city attorney has outlined this week that you would also need to amend the city's investment policy to explicitly permit this. So if you do elect to approve the Section 115 trust, we'll move to Agenda Item One and a Half, a special meeting item, where you'll need to approve the change to the city's investment policy. If you do not approve the Section 115 trust, of course, we'll just pull Item One and a Half from the agenda, and we'll proceed to Item Two. We know that all these items are related to each other. It was difficult for us to decide what order to put them in on our agenda, so we apologize for any confusion, but we look forward to hearing the council's decision on whether to engage the trust and then on Finance Director Chung's report. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Marlowe. I'm now going to recess the special meeting until after Item One of the adjourned regular meeting. Item One is the approval of the establishment of a California Employees Retirement Benefit Trust account with CalPERS for the purpose of pre-funding other post-employment benefits and authorization of an initial payment to develop the trust account. May we please have a presentation from Director Chung on item number one of the regular meetings?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Could I have my PowerPoint up, please? Well, that's coming up. I just want to thank the city council. Today, I will be presenting to the city council and the community the IRS Section 115 trust through CalPERS, a program called CERBT, or California Employees Retirement Benefit Trust. As the city manager has emphasized, that this is separate from the CalPERS pension. This is strictly the OPEV. As I mentioned, it's the Other Post-Employment Benefit Retiree Medical Retiree Program. Let me see if this is working. Okay. There we go. So let me begin. So regards to OPEV, what is OPEV? OPEV is really the retiree benefit for health portion for the retirees. We currently have 56 employees that the city is paying for, and we are on what we call a pay-as-you-go plan. I wanted to show the council how much payments that we've made over the past five years. And you can see it spans between the lowest at $156,000 and recently upwards to $167,000. And so what we do on an annual basis, we budget $200,000 out of our general fund to pay for this particular OPEV payment. And then what I wanted to really emphasize is the OPEV liability. And the liability is, I know a fancy word for accounting, but it means a future obligation of payment that the city is due over the life of this OPEV program. So what that means is currently, we are sitting at $6.3 million of an OPEV payment liability that is due for the city. And what happened was, in the chart that you see on the right side, back in fiscal year 17 and prior to that, GASB, the governing body, did not require agencies to post their liability on their balance sheet, what meant that in the forefront of the overall financial picture of agencies. What they did was, instead of putting it in the bag, they said, no, you should put this liability and reflect it as a true cost at one point that the city should deal with. So what happened was, in fiscal year 18 and on, they implemented GASB 75, and you see this big jump, because it's not that the city made a payment of, you know, back in 18 of $5.6 million, but what it meant was that the city's liability obligation due in the future looks to be about $5.6. And what is expected for next year is about $8.1 million. And where does that number come from? We have our actuaries that we ask to do our GASB calculation annually, and they're the professionals that take in mortality or life expectancy, retiree costs, medical costs, meaning how much medical cost would look like in the future years, various other calculations going through this formula, and they project out this is about what we believe is going to cost as an obligation or liability for the city in the future. So with that said, the focus is, why does the city want to open up a trust? And I believe there are four benefits to opening up this 115 trust with SERP. Number one, there's the high-yielding investments that the city will be able to utilize. But I wanted to emphasize number two, which to me is more important than anything, is to reduce unfunded liability and future contribution. What that means is that if the city council chooses to open up this trust and put money aside, that money's not going anywhere. We're basically just setting it to the trust and saying that, let's earn interest, yield interest, and that later down the line, that we can actually use this interest that has been earned to pay OPEV costs, which the city is already going to pay either way. So my focus is that, looking at the out-years, I believe that's the biggest benefit out of opening up this trust, and many agencies have taken that advantage of this program. And then another item is improving financial reporting, as the actuary will rerun their numbers with the fact that the city is setting aside money for OPEV, so that's going to help us our financial overall picture as well. And lastly, why CalPERS is because they do have the lowest admin fee at 10 basis points currently, and they have the largest pension, I'm sorry, not pension, OPEV trust in the nation. And let me just highlight why SERP. So there's a couple of reasons why SERP is our best option, and this program has been since, around since 2007, so basically 14 years. And during those 14 years, on average, they've earned a little over 8% for the various agencies that have been in part of this SERP program. It's the largest provider, and they have over 575 California public agencies as part of this SERP, with 150 cities and towns. And lastly, what's very important is that they have $14 billion worth of assets that's sitting under management. I think that's very important as well. I do want to be transparent, and there are risks, as if we set aside money to the trust and that we give the trustee the fiduciary duty to invest our funds. Number one, it is an IRS Section 115 trust, and it is irrevocable, meaning that if something, a financial issue happens in the future, that we need this money for whatever reason, and we just can't reach out and pull this money back again for operations. I do want to emphasize that the OPEV costs are still going to be there, and so that irrevocable trust is focused strictly for OPEV costs only. And then lastly, the SERP is prone to market volatility or economic volatility, as you've probably seen in the last couple of weeks, the market, whether it be the Treasury yields or the stock market, equities in general, you see that fluctuations, and that's just part of the SERP program, and that's the risk that there are, that this council needs to consider with this SERP program, CERBT program, sorry. In the staff report, I know I go into more detail, but there's four options, well, three options in the staff report, and the finance liaisons have asked me to put one more option, which I'll cover in a little bit. But Option One is, the city would do a one-time contribution out of the surplus from last year's $3.4 million excess cash, and my assumption is that after, if we join the CERBT program and it earns interest at 6.5 over five years, you'd be looking at close to $200,000 worth of interest earned. And but if we continue as pay-as-you-go, meaning we don't open up a trust and we just keep it in late, it would be close to about $12,000 in that five-year period. Another option was 750. This is what I am recommending to the city council today, and the reason for the 750 is because when you look at five years compounded over that period, you're looking at about $287,000. And that, in a way, in five years, will be able to cover our OPEV costs at that particular time, and that means that we can utilize general fund for other costs. And if we keep it in late and we don't open up the trust, we'll be, we would have earned about $24,000. Option Three is just continue pay-as-you-go, and we stay very conservative and keep the money and continue investing as we've been doing. Lastly, this Option Four is recommended by the finance liaisons for me to add, and it's an option of $1 million, just to show you that it'll be, after five years, it'll be close to $400,000, but if we keep it in late, there'll be a little over $33,000 of earned interest. Last point I want to just highlight is that the funding consideration, I, as I mentioned already, I am recommending Option Two. And, oh, sorry. The CERBT program is very flexible, meaning we, the city, is in the driving seat. We can make this one-time contribution, as I recommend, but we don't have to make annual contributions. We, I can come back to the council annually and give that option for council to continue if we want to put additional money contributions to this program. So there is no obligation to do so. And then lastly, as I mentioned, the CERBT program, in the out-years, we can utilize these interest-earned funds to pay for our OPEV costs, and I believe that that's the true value of this program. And I just wanted to conclude by saying that my, part of my duties are to, of course, look for day-to-day financial operations of the city and also preparing the annual budget. But I, so I do look into five, 20 years into the future of how can we do better and continue being in a fiscally prudent, but also in a good condition as we have been. And so I believe this trust can give us the tools to help the general fund in the future to pay for that obligation that, no matter what, has to be paid. I believe this trust will give us that benefit. With that said, I'm here for questions. I also have our trustee here on Zoom as well for to get additional questions. There are various slides that I passed out that has some points that might come up, so I added that into our PowerPoint. But other than that, I can turn it over to finance liaisons if they have additional questions or comments that, if not, then I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to add anything as finance liaison?
When I get to my questions in summary, I do, but Paul and Matt, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention, because when I was on the long-range financial task force a few years ago, we, you know, were opting to pay as you go, but this 115 trust was not on our radar screen. So at that time, we were looking to either prepay the liability at the time, to get it down, or just pay as you go. And I think that that committee, and I have sort of pulled that with a few, when they heard about this 115 trust, it looked like a very, very attractive opportunity for us.
Thank you. And I will simply add, as the other liaison, I have extreme familiarity with the trust fund in that my retirement in part is funded through membership with the trust fund. So at this point, I'd like to say thank you to Director Chung. That's a pretty comprehensive report, and I will move to questions or clarifications from council. Councilmember...
One thing Director Chung did not mention that he might want to elaborate on is the different alternatives we have for investing any contributions we might put into the trust fund?
I'm sorry, Ken. Oh, sorry, Mayor. What?
If we would elect to put some money into this trust fund, could you explain for the council and the public what the different investment strategies are that are available to us and how that works?
Yes. If we join the CERBT program, they provide the city three options. They call it Strategy One, Two, and Three. One, and I just want to get to that strategy, so Strategy One being the more aggressive, meaning aggressive, meaning that it does, it will yield additional returns, but it comes with higher risk, meaning they will put in more equities or stocks. But Strategy Three is more of the conservative look, meaning you'll have less, you'll come with less risk.
Are you referencing page 17 of the handout you gave us? Just to clarify.
I could bring this up, if you don't mind bringing up the PowerPoint. There is a slide that the trustee provided for us. It should be nine, 19 is probably the better one to look at.
Okay. I think we've got it further broken down.
Yeah.
There's your snapshot. Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes. This particular page gives you that three strategies: Strategy One, Two, and Three, the expected return; Strategy One is at the highest 7.5, and then Strategy Three being that 6.22.
Okay. So today, Director Chung, we are here to decide whether to do it, not to look at which strategy, correct?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Mayor, anything else before we move on that you'd like to add for clarification?
No, no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Wong, any questions?
On your second slide, I mean, I'm just curious, back in '16 and '17, you had used this new calculation of, you know, the OPEV liability, what those number would be? Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, you know, because back then, we didn't have to do all this. So back then, it was like 208?
Oh, I see.
So I mean, if, you know, I mean, if you use the calculation I use nowadays with those numbers, you're higher?
You're saying in fiscal year '16 and '17, at that 208 and then 221 with that pair? It would be definitely higher, yes.
And also for first 56 retirees from 2020 to 2021, there's a difference of, I would say, 1.8 million? So that comes down to like, I mean, I don't know if the calculation would be correct, but it would be like $100,000 for a retiree, means that we're looking at like the liability one?
Yeah.
I mean, for 56 million in '18, if you divide that by 56, that comes out to $100,000.
Vice Mayor, may I ask a question for Mr. Director Chung that might help clarify Dr. Wong's question?
Go ahead.
Director Chung, the $5.7 million of liability, that's not for a year. That is spread over many years. How many years is that $5.7 million covered?
When you refer to 5.7, I want to make sure that you're referring to, you want to look at the 81 number, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure.
$100,000 in, you know, 5 to 8 million dollars, because my understanding is that GASB 75, you had to look out for many, many, many years and bring a net present value of what that total liability might be and post it on the balance sheet. So the question is, how many years is the actuary looking at?
And I would say that the actuarial study doesn't really focus on how many years. They have this elaborate formula that they look at, as I mentioned, out to how many years that a retiree might live till, if, whether it be miscellaneous or a form. They have various formulas that they look at, so there's no set, to my understanding, there's no set time, let's say 29 years or 30-year period.
Okay. So that's kind of the life of the retirees?
Exactly.
And that is not a bill that we have to pay today?
No. It's similar to an insurance kind of premium, where the insurance company will project out how much life insurance that this person needs per their health and all that. So that formula is what the actuarial study does and forecasts out. This is about what the liability or obligation looks like.
And may I ask that our liaison, I think I saw you nodding there, if you could validate what has just been said or correct if needed?
Yeah, I can validate. What the actuary is doing is, they're going all the way out until the benefit is no longer obliged to be paid. So that's either Medicare eligible age 65, or in the case of your plan, death. The assumed death age for men is roughly 82, and for women is roughly 84.
How much longer?
I just got a text from my accounting manager, Mark Siegfried, and he did say that the actuarial study that we just got a couple of months ago is 30 years. So I apologize if I misspoke there, but it is a 30-year term that they looked at.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna pull by, you know, the increase of 1.8 million liability in one year, and that would be like 30, I mean, if you divide that by 32, I mean, by 56 retirees. Anyway, thank you. You answered my question.
Great. Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Taub?
Yes, thank you. Actually, you've answered a lot of my questions, but I do have one. How much is the investment policy of the program dictated by political views? For example, can we not invest in something because of the rainforests or because of cattle? You know, whatever, how much of that will be dictated by political views, given that we're dealing with public-related entities?
I think that's a great question. I do want to revert that particular question to Matt. I believe he should be able to answer that question specifically.
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question. If we could advance to the next slide, number 19, while I answer the question, this may be helpful to illustrate the underlying investments. Now, if you were talking about the CalPERS Pension Fund with over $300 billion in it, they do implement socially-conscious policies into their investment policy, which is a controversial topic. In this trust fund, you need distinct independent investment policy. We do not. So we do not divest, for example, from tobacco, even though the pension system at CalPERS does so. Now, the reason for that is because each of these asset classes, we purchase units of from State Street Global Advisors. That's the only external advisor we utilize, period. And so if we were to actually ask them to customize those benchmarks to eliminate tobacco, it would be a lot more expensive, and it would defeat for us the cost advantage that we have, which is significant, and our purpose as a not-for-profit would kind of be eliminated. So we will not be doing that in the future. We avoided the push to look at doing that in the past, and I was leading the charge of that avoidance effort, and I'm going to be working here a long time to ensure that that does not happen.
Did, thank you. You've answered my question, but it does raise one other in my mind, and that is, the anticipation is to lower the amount on our books, and I think we've talked about that, and I'm looking back. So you're looking at net OPEV liability being reduced by, it looks to be about 40% merely by doing this on our books. But if we're not going out for bonds, if we're not doing, you know, using this to go out for outside funding for things, what value does it have if it lowers that amount on our books?
I would say, to be just clear, I don't see it as a true benefit, meaning it's a bottom-line number. Does that mean that we need to pay that today? No. So it's really just a financial picture, more than anything. It's good, because the reason that we do want to do it, though, is because the fact of the matter is, it's still a liability or an obligation that the city still needs to pay eventually.
An obligation is based, however, on estimates?
On estimates, on the actuarial study and the outcome of what they believe is the liability that the city should be basically setting aside as money to pay for in the future.
Let's talk about that actual liability for a second. In that actual liability, when we talk about OPEV, what are we talking about specifically? We're talking about obligations to pay healthcare subsequent to retirement? Is that...
Yes. Yes. It's strictly for retirement health plan, yes.
Retirement health plans?
Yes.
And... And that is a contractual obligation that we have under what we negotiate on every couple of years, is that correct?
I'd like to revert that to city manager.
Yes and no, this moves over to being a more of an HR-related question. We contract with CalPERS to provide health insurance. That subjects us to PEMCO, which is their healthcare law. And part of their healthcare law mandates a certain benefit for retirees, depending on what you provide for actives. So we currently have the lowest retiree healthcare benefit that we could have while we're contracted with CalPERS, which is a minimum amount that gets contributed for that retiree healthcare. It is not as much as the total amount that goes to active employees. So the amount that we have right now cannot be negotiated differently because it's legally required by CalPERS.
That, our CalPERS obligation fluctuates depending upon factors that sometimes I think are just pulled right out of the air. On OPEB requirements, are they much more finite? Where we could actually get a better picture of what these obligations are as opposed to fluctuations in the market?
Yes, it's a flat amount that CalPERS requires be contributed for retiree health. I think it's somewhere around 100 something dollars per month is the minimum that has to be contributed for retiree health and that's the sum total of the amount that we're talking about here.
Okay, so it is, it's much more finite. So it's not a guess as we find in some of these other things, not guess, but questionable assumptions being made based upon factors that are consistently argued in Stanford.
Yes, it's very different from the picture.
Okay, so, but different in a way that is much more to our benefit in estimating what that liability is?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and I don't know whether this is, I don't know whether this is better handled by Director Chung or the representative of the plan. I was curious about the fee rate history because it has increased over the years from what I think started it.
Someone's sitting over there with a fan.
Not her at all. Okay, thank you. This has to do with the fee rate history. I believe it's in the CalPERS report, page 22, but I don't know where that is in everybody's, they seem to be differently numbered depending on what I printed out from you. Thanks, thank you. But this has to do with also the cost of even going into this investment. Two things concern me, big picture, three. Our own city needs in infrastructure and other things and where the money is best spent. And also, I would say, the irrevocable and risky nature. But I also want to know the cost of the program. When we talked about, I believe somebody else had a question about that, the fee rate history, the basis points? How is that determined? And it's, you know, gone up significantly. It seems at 10 for quite a while now. Will it stay there?
Matt, could you help answer Councilman Shepherd-Romney's question, please? Thank you.
Sure, sure. So a couple of things to establish. What, you know, is 10 basis points relative to what you might pay elsewhere? So if you were to pre-fund OPEB in a 115 trust with any other option, based on the dollar amounts you're looking at, you would spend at least 50 basis points to do that. So this is going to be five times cheaper for you with us than anyone else. Now, 10 basis points is probably very close, maybe plus or minus three basis points on either side of that with what you pay Leifert County Treasurer. So the cost differential between what you're already doing and what you would be doing with this 575 or 1 million is insignificant. But it will actually be made up for significantly with investment income over time. The mathematical probability for that is over 100.
But Matt, why, why did the fees? I think the question is, why did it go up, you know, at one point and then it's kind of been staying up versus it used to be two basis points versus, you know, nine and then 12 and now back down to 10? Could you answer that question?
Yeah, perfect segue, Paul, thank you. Because that was exactly where we were.
Sorry.
So, okay, when we first started, if you look at how we receive our costs, and this is still the case, about 66% of our costs are indirect costs, which are allocated back to us at the end of each fiscal year from different divisions within CalPERS. When we first started, we didn't have much money in the trust and we didn't have many employees. We had three people and most of the departments at CalPERS that would eventually end up billing us didn't even know to bill us, didn't really realize they were helping us, doing work on our behalf. With that said, once we got started, we grew. We became successful, we added employees. People figured out where to send the bill at the end of the year. And then you start to see it normalize. Now, the reason it goes up is because the costs of operation start to actually be realized, but you don't have as much money, like assets under management, such as 14 billion, to offset the cost. So the basis point statement is just a ratio, relationship between the cost of operation and how much money you're collecting from employers to pay for that. Now, what we've done is we've been able to flatten that out and retain that plateau, which is extremely impressive. So I wouldn't agree with a statement that indicated that costs have gone up because they actually have gone down from 15 basis points at our peak and then they've stabilized. And that's very difficult to do. So I actually built this slide as an indicator of how well we've performed relative to costs and how well we've been able to retain those costs. It's not easy to do that, but as we continue to add money to the trust, you should see us do that. So the reason why it's not going to get much lower than that in the future, maybe as low as nine, but not much more, is because the fixed cost floor is about eight and a half. So while this could go up,
And Matt, could I, I just?
It will get to 20, it will never get to 20. It will always be in that 10 to, you know, 15 range. It could go to nine. Go ahead, Paul.
No, I didn't want to cut you off. But I think you did answer the question, I think, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, so it is, it will change and it's variable. I appreciate though your education that it went up and then came back down. So that was helpful to understand the process. But it's not fixed, so it is something that will float over time.
Yes, and we usually set it once a year. It's just stayed the same for a long time now. But if we were to make changes, it would usually be in the month of July and we email our customers to indicate that. Now, the chances of that ever changing more than two basis points in either direction are extremely low. Just based on the math, the probability is just ridiculously low.
Okay, and I have two other questions. We can handle them quickly, I hope. One has to do with the asset target allocations to different strategies and you brought that up, there are different strategies depending. When is that decision made? If there is any funds going into this and how?
I'll answer a portion of it and then I'll revert to Matt on the specifics. Once we fund the, if the council takes the recognition and funds and opens its trust, at that time, we can select which strategy we want to go with. At that time, I would consult with the city treasurer and make sure that her and I are on the same page regards to what strategy to do. And then we'll come with that recommendation to the city manager and see if she agrees with our recommendation on what strategy to select. Regards to when does that happen? Matt, let's say we open the account next month. How quickly do we select? Or do we need, let's say we fund 750,000 first. Does the city, does the fund just sit there until we select a strategy? Or do we select a strategy as we open the account?
Yeah, what you would have to do is indicate which strategy you want so that we can actually open the account and then you would send us money and we would deploy immediately.
Correct.
Now, you don't have to send money right off though, Paul. So we could establish the account, it could be months before you send us money. It's no charge to you because 10 dips on zero assets is zero in cost.
All right, and the last question or the page that I wanted to direct people to is the investment returns outperform benchmark. It's 17 in one and 18 in another, depending on what. And if I'm understanding, the bench, each of these are the three different strategies that we would have a choice of. And underneath that, the benchmark is based on what? That is the length, that's our current existing kind of portfolio? Or what is this benchmark that is written here for comparison?
Sure, if we go to slide 19, the answer is right in the picture and I'll just briefly guide you back to 19, please. Okay, other direction, two clicks. Number 19, there we go. Okay, so let's say you picked SERP strategy number one. And I think Paul's calculations for, you know, the advantage in investing in our program used the SERP strategy one assumption, I believe. But with that said, the total benchmark is an aggregate of the five benchmarks here. The MSCI, ACQ, the Barclays, the FPSE, the Barclays Capital Bull Oreo and the S&amp;P GSCI. And the weighting of that is positioned right there. So 59% of the total benchmark is from the MSCI ACQ, 25% is from the Barclays Capital Long, et cetera, et cetera. So that's how we get the benchmarks. Now, the benchmarks are exactly what SSGA is trying to be and emulate in not only what they hold in the bag, but in how they perform. It has nothing to do with Leifert County Treasurer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, those are my questions.
Thank you. Mayor Yudi?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Matt, this fund has been advised for the trust since 2007, is that correct?
Correct.
And how long have you been with the fund?
Since 2007.
Okay, so it's kind of your baby.
In fact, there's others, but yes.
And are, you are your team on commission, which is, you know, if we would invest, do you personally benefit from us coming onto the trust?
We are not and I am not.
Okay, good, thank you. And Director Chung, a couple of questions for you. Councilmember Tal was focusing on the balance sheet impact of investing into this trust. In your opinion, is it more balance sheet or is it more operating expense? Because as I look at it, if you go into this trust after five years, you essentially have one year of your pay-as-you-go payment, you know, taken care of versus if we would stay in the current life investment environment. How do you view it?
I view it as exactly the option two, meaning the biggest benefit that the city will get is that the operating leverage that we will get. So the general fund doesn't have to pay the additional cost that could be focused somewhere else. The other benefit, of course, is the balance sheet looking better, meaning the financial picture. But I think that's just a component of it, but not my main reason why we should open the trust.
Yeah, because if we aren't going out to the bond market, our balance sheet is not as important as to the community and our annual cash flow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I have one more question.
Thank you. I have just a few myself. We know that if we go forward with this, it cannot be pulled out. However, let's look at a hypothetical. So say, pick any number, say we put 500 in and we decide after a year, you know, we just don't like this for whatever reason. Could we then, over the next two-plus years, pull out whatever our assessment is for those costs for that year?
Yes, and I just want to confirm that with Matt because he's the one who oversees the traffic we do open in with Matt.
Yeah, so the word irrevocable scares some people, but it's the good kind of irrevocable. You do retain liquidity. You can reimburse from us your annual costs and you experience them monthly. So we cut checks monthly for that, should you wish to take them that frequently. Every dollar that you pay in the form of retiree premiums or subsidies that come from overpayment of active premiums can come directly back to you from us in the form of a check out of your trust fund account balance and that money is now liquid in your general fund and you can do whatever you want with it.
Matt, I'm going to ask it a different way. We've got the 500 in there, let's say it's starting to earn interest and for some reason, we decide, you know what, we just don't want to do that anymore. We can't straight withdraw it, but we can use it for our annual billing of that roughly 200 and some thousand to clean it out, correct?
Vice Mayor, I could answer that question and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
But if there's no, if we move it down to zero, there's no pre-penalty, I'm sorry. Pre-penalty fee or anything like that.
Well, Matt, could you confirm that for councilmember?
Yes, that, the question as stated is accurate. There are no penalties, additional fees or anything above and beyond what we've discussed in cost. If you zero it out, it costs you nothing. You just have an open account with a zero balance you have to terminate. You can also transfer out of our trust to another competitor trust at any time, free of charge, if you decide you don't want to work with us. If you end up eliminating the benefit entirely, you're no longer promising OPEB to anybody and you have a million bucks in our trust, we can return all of it to you in the form of a check.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I'm looking at the risk issue, so thank you.
For sure, thank you.
I have a question actually for, I have a question for Treasurer Han, may I please? Sorry. Thank you. I think for many of us as councilmembers, when we came on board, we were, at least I was quite shocked at the limitations that we had where we could invest our cash assets. And you've really done a good education in helping us to understand. I know we have a decent amount in Leif with the other local area governments and you did some kind of magic in getting our new bank until the interest rates dropped to give us something over basis points. And we also invest in some different notes. Could you talk about a snapshot of those returns and the highest rates you can go, or you have found rather, over the last year or two, the trend on those with regard to the rest of our money?
A few points regarding that, can you hear me?
A little bit louder, please.
Okay. Our current yield for the money market account is around 0.68%. It's a bank money market. And Leif is yielding about 0.58% right now. And these are no-risk investments. These are pretty much money sitting in the bank earning interest. However, this 115 trust, we're moving a portion of our liquidity into an irrevocable trust, which will be generating, I believe Paul used the term interest and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not really an interest. It's a, we use an average of 6.5%, which is the historical history of what this 115 trust has been performing out of strategy one, two and three. So for strategy one, which is very risky, we have about 59% in equity and that's yielding about 6. something percent. I don't have my.
But sticking with the ones that we're currently involved in?
Yes, yes. I will do a comparison, I'll do a comparison. Strategy one is at 5.86%. Strategy two is at 8.21% and three is at 6.49%. These are historical history returns. It doesn't guarantee that we're going to be getting 6.5%, but that's a good number for Paul to do his calculation. When we have a good market, it's going to go up and we have a down market, probably we're not getting the 6.5. It is good that we set money aside to burn a good return to pay our budgeted $200,000 OPEB liability payment every year. But bear in mind, we're doing investments and there's going to be risk involved. In the meantime, if this is a good strategy, I believe it is, because we can use a portion of our money, which is going to be earning, which is earning, especially with this pandemic, we're earning 0.58%, 0.68%, less than 1% in bank products. But we're putting money aside and again, we've got to understand there's going to be risk involved. We might be getting really good return capital appreciation to cover our annual payment. So we don't really have to take it from our general fund. But in the meantime, we have to have the understanding and appetite for risk. But in the meantime, we have to have the understanding and appetite for risk. For the pandemic, we're looking at the interest rate taking up a little bit, little by little, but not that much. For us to get a nearly 6.5% in CDs, we're looking at quite a ways to go unless the market is going to be turning drastically. CD rates are still earning 0.5% if we go out to five years. But for the 115 trust, our $8.1 million CalPERS unfull liability is long-term. So we have to look at the strategy for the 115 trust. It's going to be, the time horizon is going to be long-term as well. So we can go aggressive, but at the same time, risk and return, when you go long-term, there's going to be risk involved. We are putting with the proposal, we're looking at between 500,000 to a million. So that is between 1.5% to 3% of our annual budget, which is at 33, 34 million. So we are setting aside 1.5% to 3% of our money into a trust, hoping to get a return that's going to generate enough money to pay for our annual CalPERS OPEB payment. But again, there's going to be, you know, when we get into a down market, oh, the stock market is pretty volatile now. It was up 400 points and then it down 500 points. So we have to have the understanding that this is going to be something that, you know, that it's going to be risk involved, but it's not going to be guaranteed that we're going to be getting the 6.5% interest that, you know, for the money in this portfolio. It's going to be fluctuating depending upon performance.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Treasurer.
Treasurer Han, I appreciate how you explain things. In terms of, if we consider a million-dollar long-term or 750,000, whatever the amount is, of a long-term investment, and you brought up like CDs, for example, five-year CD or a 10-year CD, because the idea is that this particular irrevocable trust is targeted for a very long-term, both for yield reasons, that it will help us over the lifespan of this plan, our OPEB liability. So what would it, if instead we went a more conservative route and just put 1.5% to 3% in a CD that is incredibly secure, obviously, for all the various fiduciary obligations that we hold, what would be the return on that?
Well, we're, with the current market, we cannot find any CD, bank CD, with a return of 1.5% or 2%. It wasn't the case a year and a half ago.
Right.
We could get CDs at 2.5%, 3%. As the market is right now, interest rate on bank CDs is very low, very, very low. The money we have, with the current portfolio, we have our money split between Leif and Money Market Account, but they're at the 0.58% and 0.68%, which is, you know, the best we can get, which is, which is better than a five-year CD. And we cannot go longer than five years because of government code. After San Jose and Orange County, they put a five-year maximum on our investments. Duration cannot be longer than that. However, for the 115 trust, it's, it's something we set money aside to offset a long-term liability. So when we put money aside, we look at the time horizon and risk tolerance. So the time horizon for the money is going to be long-term. So that's why they don't recommend that we put money in here and try to liquidate in two years or three. But in the meantime, we, we need to take a look and review the risk. Do we want to go very risky to generate the return, which is, you know, the past history doesn't guarantee what the future is going to generate for us. But we would like to get as much as we can from this portfolio to generate enough income to pay for our OPEB liability payment, which is budgeted for $200,000 a year.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from council? I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak at this time on this item? I see none. Do we have any?
I have just one thing I'd like to add to help you with your decision, if that would be okay. I'll be brief.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to make sure everybody thinks of this as opposed to an either-or decision, but a decision of both. So what Treasurer Han proposed will not stop with respect to using Leif or that Money Market Account at your financial institution down the street to pay your current year and next year's costs. You will continue to pay your retiree premiums from your current year operating budget, and how you invest that money is an important decision. What you're going to be doing with the trust is adding to that a higher-yielding investment tool for future costs, from which you have the option to take the money out or not. So with the risk that you might experience, let's say in year seven because of down unit values, you can choose just not to reimburse from the trust during that time and not realize what are temporarily only unrealized losses. So if you think of it as using both tools in harmony with one another to maximize return and also mitigate risk, I think it's actually more accurate about how you're going to be using these two tools. So you're not choosing to walk away from the more conservative investments. And one last point, on the CDs, one of the problems with those is lack of liquidity during the period of time for the term, such as 60 months over five years. You don't have liquidity, whereas with the 115 trust, you do retain liquidity, such that if you have positive returns after 18, 24, 36 months, you're in the black. You can reimburse should you wish to do so, and you would benefit from that. You can't have that same, you don't have that same option with a CD. So I hope that helps you with your decision-making.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we didn't have any comments in the room. Do we have any public comments submitted electronically?
There are no requests for comments.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to bring the item back to council for discussion. Any comments, questions from council?
May I?
Certainly.
You know, when I, when I look at this, and I'm reacting to the term "risk" here, is that we, the city, in reserve, between our reserve fund and our capital improvement fund, have over $30 million in the bank. And what we're looking at here is allocating perhaps $1 million, less than 3% of our reserves, to a fund that will likely earn, you know, 5% to 6% more than our current life investing situation. So we're not asking to move all of our funds into this irrevocable trust. We're asking to move just a very, very small sliver of funds. And I know we're the custodians of the city's money and our citizens' money, but, you know, when I look at, or we should all look at our personal investments. Would we rather invest 100% into a 1% return, or would we like to diversify a little bit and see if we could make up a little bit more? And also with these funds, they go into a trust, and they come out of it, fund the OPEB liabilities in the future. And we're going to have to fund those OPEB liabilities in the future, either out of operating reserve or out of our operating expenses, or off of this investment pool. So, you know, I just don't look at this as a, as a risky thing at all, but I think it's something that we should all seriously consider supporting.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Well, yes, I want to thank, you know, Director Chung and his department for their effort. And, I mean, you know, I know this is a risk that we take, but it would be great to use $750,000 to fundraise, you know, for this, for these liability. So I think this is a great idea, and I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talt?
Thank you, and thank you all for your participation. I do agree with that philosophy. I look at this as another tool in our toolbox, and it gives us a higher rate of return. And still, it's, I don't really perceive it as pre-funding. I perceive it as just putting this money in a different investment pool that allows us subsequently to withdraw that money at basically any time to pay these, these costs. So it's not, it's not really pre-funding in the traditional sense. However, I am risk averse, especially with other people's money, and that's why I would like to see us on the lower end of the initial investment, even if we choose to go with Strategy One, that's no particular issue with me, and to see how it does indeed perform for us, and then in the future, if we want to put more money in, we can.
Thank you. May I ask a follow-up question to your comment? And this would be for Matt, I presume. So if Councilmember Talt is suggesting a lower risk, could you address what would happen or how it would go into place, or could it go into place if the council wanted to go higher in the future?
Yeah. So you can change strategies at any time. We would just receive from Paul would be good enough, but it could come from council, a letter of direction to do that, and that would be as an attachment on a city letterhead in email. And then we would move the money within 30 days from, let's say, Strategy Two, where we started, to Strategy One, or if you started in Strategy One to Strategy Two. Another thing you could do is you could send us the money dollar-cost average over time. So let's say that your decision ends up being 500 grand, divide that into 10 chunks, and use a 10-month period to make those contributions monthly, to mitigate some of the onboarding, deployment risks associated with market timing.
No, well, and that is not actually what I was saying. My, it is that if we decide to do 500,000 this year, we can make a separate, we could increase that amount in the future by saying, okay, this year we want to throw in an additional 250,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I was...
Okay. But I guess you led to my question, that we could also, along with increasing money, change strategy. This is a new dating relationship. We want to make sure we're comfortable both, both ways, and as we get to know each other better and feel, I think the word here is "trust."
Yeah, but there's no bottle of wine here, so...
Right. Dating me, I'm really sorry for you all, but okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romig?
Yes, I wanted to thank Director Chung and Treasurer Han, as well as Mr. Gos, I'm sorry, for helping us through this and to understand the vehicle. I do have problems with it personally. I think that as government entity, we need to be the most conservative, and so I would not be comfortable putting money here. And also, I think the timing is off. We're in an economic, volatile economic period still, as evidenced by stock market ties and then huge drops. So this, for me, is not the time to enter into this vehicle. If it was a year from now, perhaps, and we understand where the revenues, what our economy is looking like that, it was a more stable period, I would be more comfortable. And as I said before, we also, at that time, I know, after receiving various information about our storm water systems and our sewers and our, all the infrastructure things that we have coming down the road, I am very reluctant to commit to just parking money somewhere for a yield of a couple hundred thousand dollars, when in my mind, fixing infrastructure yields a better return. Because the longer we don't do these things, the worse it is, the worse it gets. And it's already past due on almost all of those critical categories for our cities. So I cannot commit to putting money in this at this time.
Vice Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Yes, so Director Chung, how soon will, I mean, the money be wired to the trust if this approves it? I would assume if the council approves, next week I could wire the money to CalPERS. Of course, after all the formality, the forms and all that, that needs to be done, but when that's done, I would say probably next week is when the wire will be done. And how soon do you, do you have the strategy that we're going to take, or is, can you make room, this determines that? We could wire the funds, and then we, oh, he said, Matt said that we need to select the strategy, so we would strategize, we'll select the strategy, and then we'll wire the funds with the application to open the fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I make my comments, is there anybody else who had more to request? All done, councilwoman? Okay.
Oh, wait, can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
If, if the other councilmembers do want to go forward with this, I would recommend, as Mr. Gos suggested, I think investment should always be done on a dollar-cost averaging basis, particularly in the current markets. So I would, if some, let's say $500,000, I would think that we would want to do that over a five-month period or 10-month period, and spread out those, because we also minimize the market.
Okay. Thank you. I too appreciate the detailed education, at least I had to have from the beginning of this, and I hope it's been helpful to my colleagues. I think we could all say a little bit, with a little bit of knowledge about what we know about trusts, the 115 trust now. The way I'm looking at it, say we go with 500, that would buy us two and a half years of, let's call them, premiums. And if we don't like it, we just clean out the account at that point. We have to pay this money, so as Treasurer Han said, the highest we're going to get right now is 0.65. That's the money we would be taking it from. I would prefer that we have a higher rate of return to help offset the cost of this payment that is not going away anytime soon. With that, do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number R-21-06, approving the SERP participation agreement with CalPERS for the city to participate in the SERP. And I move to approve Resolution Number R-21-07, authorizing certain positions in the city to request disbursements from the SERP trust. And I move to authorize staff to file the necessary forms with CalPERS. And I move to make a one-time contribution of $500,000 to open the SERP Section 115 trust with CalPERS.
Mayor Udi, if I may, there is a minor change that's needed to the second motion, stated in your recommendation section of Page 10 of the staff report, so that it mirrors the title of the corresponding resolution found on Page 32 of the staff report. That motion should instead state, "I move to approve Resolution R-21-07, making delegations to certain positions in the city with respects to the CalPERS Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust."
Thank you for putting words in my mouth. Thank you for that.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romig?
No.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay. And I thank you again. That was a really helpful report from staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now reconvene the special meeting and recess the adjourned regular meeting until the conclusion of the special meeting. If that's not confusing, I don't know if it is. Okay. So under New Business, Approval of Resolution Number R-21-08, Adopting the Revised City of San Marino 2020 Investment Policy. May I please have a presentation from City Manager Marlo?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you for indulging the strangeness of the morning. As you know, as I mentioned earlier, the city attorney applied that with the adoption of the Section 115 trust. There are changes that must be made to the city's investment policy. So the policy that is attached here does make those changes. It makes no other additional changes. And that concludes our report. The city attorney, Finance Director Chung, and I are all here if you have any questions.
That's your report.
That's my report.
Okay. Thank you. We now move on to council questions. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romig?
No, I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
No, no more questions.
Mayor Udi?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Talt is not present at the moment, and I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to open this now for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, do we have any public comments, requests for... requests for public comments electronically?
There are no requests for comments.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to bring the item back to council for discussion. Are there any comments, questions from council, any further discussion?
I do have one.
Sure.
If we're, if this is going to be adopted, is this only allowing for an irrevocable trust in this, whatever it is, 115 SERP? Or is this now changing our investment policy to allow any irrevocable trust?
City Attorney, can you take that question?
Yes, I can. Thank you for that question. The investment policy proposed revision is provision 2.0 of this scope, and it would be changing to accept from the investment policy, any trust for the payment of employee retiree health benefits. So it's not necessarily limited to just this trust, but any trust for payments of those funds.
All right, thank you. So if there is another vehicle in the future that we want to pursue, then that, as long as it's limited to that, if you will, focus or use, it would allow us to leave the money?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Hong?
No, no comments, thank you.
Taunt? Any further comments?
No.
Uh, councilmember.
Thank you.
I've got to get away from my phone calls, don't I?
It shocked me. I thought someone was going to throw me a ball or something. I haven't heard that since I played field for a while.
My apologies.
No need to apologize.
Mayor Udi?
No questions, thank you. No comment.
And I have none. I owe you. Does anyone have a motion?
A motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Treasurer?
I just have a, I just have a quick question for City Attorney. Under Section 2.0, I know you mentioned that this is going to be limited to the CalPERS payment for medical benefit. But here, under Section 2.0, pretty much we mentioned, and retirement funds holding trust, do we need to add more verbiage, or this will be sufficient? This is good enough?
The proposed revisions to 2.0 are sufficient for the 115 trust that the council just approved in the last item.
Okay. And this will not open us to, this is not going to allow us to invest our liquidity in any sort of equity portfolio for our funds other than retirement funds? Is that correct?
That is correct. This is only limiting to allow investments in trusts for the payment of employee retiring health benefits. And so it's accepting it from the city's current investment policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments? If not, do I have a motion? I move that the city council adopt Resolution Number R-21-08, a resolution of the city council of the City of San Marino, California, adopting the revised 2020 investment policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romig?
No.
Councilmember Taunt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, as now part of the regular meeting, I will reconvene the adjourned regular meeting and recess the special meetings until the conclusion of the adjourned regular meeting. Item number two, Review of fiscal year 2021, mid-year financial review, updated five-year financial forecast and long-term financial projections, and authorization of the transfer from the general fund reserves to the capital projects fund. May we please have a presentation from Director Chung?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for bringing up the PowerPoint slide. I do have another slide for you this morning, because it is a financial review. I do have to go over various numbers. But this will be a high level, being that the staff report does include the various specifics of the mid-year and the various forecasts and whatnot. But before I start, I do want to emphasize that earlier this week, I did email the council regards to a slight correction that I needed to make on the agenda for Section 2-4. I had a note here, Note 2, that stated that the fire department was not deployed for strike team duties during the prior year. That was not what I meant to say, because we did deploy the fire department strike team last year for the stage rich fire. And so what I meant was that the reimbursement did not come in last year. That's what I meant to say there. I just wanted to make sure that's on the record for the correction. And let me begin with the, just the agenda, as you know, is long, but I will try to be brief. Mid-year, the last quarterly update included, of course, three months, but also the six months of data. So this is relatively the same information from my last report. Mid-year was six months in, with the amended budget was $30 million. Year-to-date, which is six months' worth, $11.6 million was collected, which is 38.6% lower, if you compare it to the budget. This tends to be the case during the first six months, and we do catch up during the next second half of the year. Revenues overall are, remain robust, meaning our taxes, which is mainly 67% to almost 70% of our revenue, remain intact. Property tax are above 4% from last year. Franchise taxes are 17%. Property tax, transfers are 26% higher than last year, and UUTs are 7% higher. And they are on par with what I have forecasted in the budget. When we do compare it to prior year, it's about $0.3 million or less than last year, 2.1%. And that's really because of the various COVID impacts that I will cover. As you know, I've been a broken record here regards to COVID impacts. We've been fortunate that we didn't have a huge impact, but of course, we're not out of the woods. Charges for service are definitely down due to facilities, mainly facilities being closed. We saw some weakness here in community development and recreation and library. Good thing with community development, being that I work with the director, Cervantes, and they are on budget to meet their revenues. But unfortunately for recreation and library, as the closure continues, they're meant to be, they will miss budget. Money and property, investment income is tracking low, but we should hit budget by year end. Rents and concessions on the red side continues to be weak. Bright side is that rents and concessions on the Lacy Park side, though, we are seeing strong revenues from the park over the weekends. Moving on to the expenditures for mid-year, we budgeted $28.2 million. We've expended $12.2 million, or 44% of the budget. So that's a good sign, being that we are under budget. We should be close to 50% expended, but we are tracking under. So at this time, we don't need additional appropriation from the council to, for the six months before the remainder of the year. We are tracking 0.5 or 4.7% higher than last year. And last year's comparison is probably not a great comparison, being that the most important thing to remember is last year, this time last year, for the six-month period, the MOUs are still in negotiations. So that cost didn't really kick in until February of 2020. So that cost wasn't really captured last year during this period. But then also, we do have expenditure savings from COVID from this year. So it's really a hard comparison to just look strictly against last year. With that said, we are seeing expenditure savings because of COVID. Many of that savings is from the part-time salaries through Community Services Department, due to the facility closures, savings in the contract classes, before-school care programs, and preschool. These are, of course, comes with offsets on the revenue side, because these are costs recovered. But that's why it's reflected also in the revenue side, but also on the expenditure as well. Contractual services, we've been seeing as services are limited during these COVID times. But also, we have seen increases on COVID because of the COVID expenditures, various masks that we've been purchasing throughout. And the report that we produce for the council every month reflects the various expenditures that we've been covering. And then the overtime costs due to COVID impacts. Last question here on the mid-year, fund balance. We are still looking good compared to last year. We ended the year, or ended the six months, $13.9 million versus last year's $12.7. And CIP fund balance remains at $16.5 million versus $13.8 million. Moving on to the year-end projections, as we are gearing up for next year's fiscal year, I wanted to highlight a few things here for the council as we are moving to budget. Year-end revenues, these are my best projections for how we're going to end the year. We're going to be about $1.1 million or $3.6 million less than what we projected in our budget. We budgeted $30 million this year, and I'm expecting to end the year at $28.9 million. On the expenditure side, we're going to be actually lower as well, $1.3 million, or about 4.7% lower than budget. So our budget currently is $28.2 million, and the year-end estimate is at $26.9 million. And that's, of course, because of the various COVID impacts for the first six months, but of course, projecting out for the remaining six months. But at the end of the day, we should have still a surplus and not dip into our 40% reserves at the end of the fiscal year. Moving on to the five-year forecast, I know there's a lot of numbers here, so let me just quickly walk you through this. So the first column on the left is the year-end projection that I just talked about. We are forecasting the end of the year at 2.1%, or $2.1 million in the, with the surplus. But moving on to next year, of course, we're going to be packaging the budget together during the next couple of months. But this is just my best guess at this point of what it should be, of estimate. So I'm expecting the revenues to climb back up about 7.6%. And the reason for that is, of course, as we're, my fingers are crossed, that we get out of COVID, that next year will be somewhat normal, and that we should be able to catch up to some of the revenues that we weren't bringing in. But then on the expenditure side, we are expecting higher expenditures as well, because the MOU increases plus the pension cost increase. And it's really, this increase is driven by the pension. CalPERS submitted what it looks like for next year, and it's slightly higher, the expenses. Moving on to the various out-years, I wanted to just highlight fiscal year '24, '25. If you look at the expenditure, you see a drop in expenditure, 1.3% increase versus the other prior years are about 3.1 or 3.5. And the reason for that is, that particular year is the year that we basically pay off our pension obligation bond. That's a $575,000 that the general fund has been paying. So we will mature those bonds in basically fiscal year '23, '24, and no longer have to pay that starting '24, '25. So the expenditure, of course, naturally drops. And then moving on to fiscal year '25, '26, you see that there's a negative 9.4% on the revenue side. And that big decrease there is really because the public safety parcel tax. I did not include that, because that would be the year, if the voters, of course, the community passes that, that would add that five years back in. But that's the year that I project as zero, if the parcel tax does not pass. Moving on to the long range. So in the packet for the staff report, there is a very large, very convoluted financial projection with a lot of numbers. But instead of projecting that up on the wall, I just wanted to highlight a few points here. The green line on this chart is basically all the revenue for the next 30 years, and then expenditures. And everything stayed equal, I wanted to highlight three points, three things that will happen. In fiscal year '23, '24, we will have our pension obligation bonds paid off. So we will see a decrease in expenditures, naturally, that particular fiscal year. And then on '24, '25, the public safety parcel tax, if it does not pass, and my assumptions are it never passes moving forward, that means that revenue of about $4 million will go away, and we, our expenditures for those years, out-years, are going to be higher than revenues. And then, of course, in fiscal year '38, '39, CalPERS projects that our pension liability should revert, and our expenditure pension expenditure should be less, and that our revenues should start growing more than our expenditures. Last table chart here, the, this is another perspective. I wanted to show the council regards to surplus, in a way, net income, meaning the blue line is our anticipated surplus. So going back to what, how this chart moves, is that in fiscal year '23, '24, the obligation, pension obligation bond gets paid off. So naturally, we're going to have more cash, so our surplus will be higher. But then, because the public safety parcel tax, if it does not pass, that natural revenue that we've been getting will go away. So of course, our surplus will go into a deficit in year '25, '26. And then we will remain in the deficit for, until 2028, '29, oh, '38, '39, sorry, when CalPERS' is liability, starts to decrease, and our revenue starts to be higher, and hence, we'll get a surplus. With that said, this last page I have is regards to the general fund, capital projects fund transfer. We ended the year, this is the excess cash that we had. I come to the council every year, regards to how we ended the year. We ended the year at $3.4 million, that the city council has the option to move this to the capital fund. The decision that was made earlier from Agenda Item 1 was the $0.5 million for the one-time contribution. So if we take that out from $3.4 million, if I just make the math simple, $3.4 million minus the $0.5 million one-time contribution, that will leave $2.9 million of capital fund that the council could authorize to move to the CIP fund. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chung. Extremely informative presentation. Why don't we start the questions with the esteemed councilmember Steve Taunt?
Thank you, Director. I actually have no questions. You did a very good job explaining everything to me the other day, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romig?
Yeah, I just had a couple things, and I appreciated Director Chung also speaking with me and sending me supplemental information on this. I did have a question regarding the overtime, and I wanted to direct you to Page 216 or Page 260, depending on what pagination people are on. But it is the 2021 year-end projections. And I was wanting further explanation to understand how firm you are on the overtime amounts. We have overtime for safety and overtime for miscellaneous, but I'm particularly interested in the overtime for the safety. I think that's our public safety officers and firefighters, et cetera, paramedics. But I don't know if that's exclusively where we're seeing the overtime. I do know that it's an issue for the city, and I wanted to see, because the projection is going up by almost a quarter there. So what, do you expect that that's a firm number, or are we seeing that is continuing to increase because of COVID-related issues and illnesses, or safety even, of people staying home to even quarantine themselves?
It's a great question, councilmember. The way I perceive, and I put this together, was basically, I wanted to take out some of that COVID impact, naturally, because of COVID. And strictly, I'm speaking for the safety, overtime safety, as you can see, that that's the big portion of the overtime. The miscellaneous overtime, that's just various little overtime that we, the city does have to utilize at times for maybe special events and whatnot. But mostly, this is for the safety portion. And I understand there's always a concern regards to the overtime. I think there's a mix, there's many mixtures that goes into the safety portion of it. If there's any kind of workers comp where a staff is out, a public safety officer is out, then we have to cover for overtime. There's COVID impacts, as staff is out, we need scheduling, so we need to put overtime fireside as well. So this number that I projected here is, what I do is, I look back three years, 10 years, because there's actual, a lot more data behind all the spreadsheets, regards to what does it look like, and my best professional opinion that it looks like in the future. And that's the number that I felt. Could it change? Yes. It's just, at this point, my best figure, I believe. And as we work through the budget process, I would get a lot more information, because I would have another three months' worth of data for the council. And at that time, we could get you a better budget number for next year, and what that overtime would look like.
All right, thank you. And so, and you, to understand, you've taken out COVID from this, or this, or you're setting on taken out? Is this including outage, overtime, due to the COVID-related issues? Or is this just more traditional sense of overtime to cover workers' comp, or things that occur, looking from a historical perspective? I'm just trying to understand what is included in that.
My apologies. Yes, it excluded the COVID, because my assumption is that, as I mentioned, I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, that we'll be out of COVID by next fiscal year. But of course, that's just my. my best guess.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. And also, this would reflect to both the chiefs, I'm sure this also reflects in part the officers who have departed and covering, as well as retention and new hires. So there's a lot that goes into this calculation, actually. And our departments are in a little bit of a state of flux in that regard, too. Have you taken into account some of those consequences?
Definitely, to a certain degree, as much as I can. I could, of course, as a data prisoner, love to get into all those weeds, but, but that's my job, yes, I did, but there's a certain extent that I could do, and then at that point, it's just a bunch of assumptions that I'm making, and that's just not, you know, smart.
Okay, thank you very much. I just needed some clarity on that. The other was, if you would go, or maybe it's still up, I don't know, no, the long-term financial projections. The chart, we could just go to that, it's a lot easier than going through the numeric pages in our agenda packet. My concern, kind of when I look at this page, though, has to do with the break-even, the red line, and I was trying to think about that, no, I'm talking about the one that was, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
I don't, it's not numbered, so I couldn't refer you to the right ones. Is that the, is the red line a variable?
No.
In a sense, or are you taking what our budget is as we sit here today, and then, you know, obviously salaries increase, expenses increase, who knows what costs infrastructure? I know you can't project all of those, but is that number, that's a flat line, but I'm trying to understand, does it include all the increasing obligations that as a city we will necessarily have over this range? Because, you know, its relative usefulness compared to the blue line has to do with if our budget every year goes up, obviously, then it would also trend upward. So the hole will be deeper, if you will, and it will follow the blue line in increasing costs as well as increasing revenues, if you will.
Yes, this is an oversimplification. The beauty of a graph is that you don't have to project a bunch of numbers up on the wall, it just gives you a snapshot of how it looks like. Now, to answer your question on the red line, there is no budget number in there, this is basically saying zero, meaning at the end of the year, we're going to net zero expenditures and revenues are going to come out to be zero dollars, that we're not going to have any surplus. That's not what that red line means. Basically, what the blue line is representing is how does our net income or our surplus look like through these years as we go out, and as it goes up and down, and as you can see, it goes into the deficit under that red line, because our expenditures are going to be higher than our revenues. That's what I'm going to show on this graph.
All right, thank you.
Anything further?
Nothing.
Thank you. Wong?
No question, thank you.
Mayor Yudi?
No questions, but Paul, I want to thank you for keeping your eye on the long term, because this is a good healthy discipline to have, is something the city did not have in the past, and a reminder of how important the public safety tax is, or the changes we'll have to make if that doesn't get renewed in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to echo also, Director, your reports just become more and more informative for, I suspect, the whole council, and I know there's quite a bit of labor put into these, so thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, so I think we have covered our discussion. Is there anything further anyone would like to say? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to receive and file the FY 2020-21 musical financial review, updated five-year financial forecast, and long-range financial projections. And I move to approve the transfer of $2.9 million fund re-reserves to the capital projects fund reserves.
And I apologize, I may have inadvertently missed it, but was there any public comments on this item, by saying?
Thank you, I had been reminded, well, the mayor was speaking, Mayor Culpa, I'm going to put that on hold for a moment, and thank you, council, I appreciate that. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on this item? And do we, I see none, and do we have anyone responding electronically on this item?
There are no requests for comment, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Real call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tong?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we move on to item number three, authorization of the implementation and management of the San Marino Wayfinding Program. I understand we will be having a presentation for management analyst Stephanie Britt.
Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me? Good morning, City Council, and thank you for considering the city's wayfinding program. This is a great investment in the city's infrastructure. We have been working very hard in the economic development team to come up on new ways to support our businesses that have suffered due to COVID-19. So this program is mainly a wayfinding sign program that will direct shoppers towards our business districts. However, to send shoppers to these business districts, we do have to name them, so we brainstormed along with Hutt Design to come up with some names for these business districts. Then we came up with a survey for the community, and we received their feedback, we integrated the feedback into these names, and finally, we arrived at the following names. For the shops close to the high school, it will be Titan District. For the shops close to City Hall, it will be City Center. For the shops close to Oak Knoll Street, it will be Oak Knoll District. And finally, for Mission Street, it will be Mission Village. The signs will direct to these specific shopping districts, and it will help create an identity that will help them market themselves. The next steps will be to fabricate and install these signs, it will be approximately $75,000 that will come from the city beautification program. Now Aldo will show us where the signs will be placed.
Just to reference the council up on the screen with the map, where we anticipate to look to launch the program with placement of the signs that we're looking to provide here. And so, of course, the screen is, it's not showing the best image, but to help, we're looking at a sign placement of about 10 or so signs that are intended to be directional signs. The map in your package probably fits more readable in the case of the screen here. But the first sign will be located here by the high school location. We have four signs in the city center which are located here in the San Marino and Huntington Drive, Sierra Madre and Huntington Drive. There's an additional sign located here along Huntington Drive that's near Oldville, and then we have two additional signs down here on Los Robles and Huntington Drive. An additional sign on Sierra Madre, near California Lombardi, and the last sign near Mission Village, near Los Robles. And all of these signs are intended to provide, as Stephanie had mentioned, the directional component to leading folks into our commercial corridors. And the signs placed will help advertise those very specific locations. And as Stephanie had mentioned, the intention here is part of the beautification efforts of Mission and Huntington Drive. And so, with that said, if there's any other questions before we reach out to the recommendation, in this case, the recommendation is of staff to approve the naming of the various commercial districts, approve the design of the posts and signs, and direct staff to proceed with the procurement process for selecting the contractor. Now, prior to the council discussion, I do want to add that there is, there is an opportunity and ability for us to, prior to hiring a contractor, to developing a mock-up of one of these signs and placing that mock-up in a public right-of-way prior to proceeding on a direction moving forward. So with that said, I open for questions.
Thank you. Lightly begin, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do have some questions. I appreciate that we've been in communication on this, and so I can understand better the strategy involved in the number, because I do have an overall concern that we have, I guess you're going to say, an overwhelming amount of signage along the median, along Huntington Drive, along the street signs and streetlights and slowdown and everything that's so important to our city. And so I do have some concerns and want to minimize kind of the sign pollution, if you will, or the, whatever we want to call this. And I have some question specific to you, the location of, now that I know, and I have clarification, the Titan District sign will be very much down by San Gabriel, so it's not really near the high school, it's the area with the U.S. Post Office where the church is, and there's a couple smalls, like a row of stores at fronts, if you will, between the post office and San Gabriel Boulevard? Is that what you're calling the Titan District?
That's what we're calling, yes, yes. But the sign itself is actually placed, I would say, near, I guess the closest landmark would be Tony's Pizza, but you're absolutely correct that the shopping center near Huntington Drive is San Gabriel, that's what we're calling the Titan District.
Okay, because here it says the key location is on the signage was at San Gabriel Boulevard, number five, sign number five. Do you see, so I'm just trying to understand, because I found this, I didn't...
Yeah, we're not proposing any signs. At that, at that specific location, there's an existing monument sign.
Correct.
We do not propose to touch, in fact, those signs, including all the other monument signs, were identified in our historic survey.
Right.
So we're not going to be touching those signs at all, period. And we're not looking to include any additional signs in that vicinity.
Okay.
Other than the one near what I call the, near the Tony's Pizza location.
Okay, understood, so thank you, that helps me. Secondly, getting to the sign design itself, I noticed that you have one, I'm going to say, I believe it's page 60 of our packet for council members and the public, the very first one that's here says San Marino, and it's kind of on an arm, if you will, and I guess it would be a swinging sign, or would have some movement, because it looks to be hanging from a chain. And I'm trying to figure out where this is going, and I have a problem with this design generally, but where is this sign appearing in the city?
Yeah, that sign we're not going to be installing. What we want to do is we want to develop a very, a consistent pattern, a consistent design, and the ones that are identified as a sort of a, an arm projection, swinging downwards, is not going to be the approach.
I'm sorry, say the word.
Is not going to be the approach we want to take in the sign. What we want to do is focus more on the signs, whereas they're posted at the center of the post, rather than hanging up in our...
So like page 62, 63, and then 64, the ones after that?
Correct.
And so I understand, are we going to have a sign that actually says San Marino anywhere in our city?
Not as part of this project, no.
Okay, so now we're going to page 64, if you will, and these are more the wayfinding or directional signs that you envision us using, if you will. Okay, and about this, I notice on this, there's nothing on the backside of these, and I'm wondering, was that a conscious decision? Because I looked at this company and their website, you know Pasadena has a, uses them as well, Santa Barbara does, a number of cities, San Francisco does, I mean, so all over California, there have many cities that are, they're clients, and all of them have a design on the backside, even if it's just the tree or the design of their, you know, slightly more enhanced of the graphic that you have on the front. Was it a conscious decision to save money, to not have anything on the back?
Not at all. In fact, the great thing about this process of this morning is, is the council can actually generate the design, and so if the council sees fit to add the year door tree in this case to the back, has a silhouette, that could certainly be added to these signs.
Okay, and then is it also possible to mount, a lot of times you could reduce the amount of signage by making it a double-sided sign, actually, particularly instead of having, if you look at that map, you know, so many in front of the library and San Marino Center seem to have two signs, again, I don't know if this is correct, but it might be better to have one two-sided sign if that's, you're trying to direct people to both those, because they're right here within the block of each other, that type of concept, to lessen the amount and also make it more cost-effective.
No, absolutely, those are great suggestions, and we can, like I said, this is the part, this is the piece of the project that we look to narrow the scope down somewhat to help control costs, of course. But going back to a couple of your questions upfront about sign pollution, you and I are taking the same thing here. I'm not looking to, if you look at the map, I understand it's not easy to read, but there are a lot of signs on this map that are not proposing to put in at all because of the threat of sign pollution. In fact, you know, Brian and I spoke a little bit about this yesterday, he has some experience in wayfinding programs, and he has, he has a great suggestion of looking to discuss this with the, with the possible Public Safety Commission or our Director of Public Works to maybe swap out some of the signs to, to reduce the number of signs that are out in the public right-of-way. So that's a strategy as well.
Great, thank you. I think those were my main comments, I would like to see dual signage where we can, and a silhouette if it's not appropriate, and definitely, 10 is not so many, but it is when you consider everything that's in our built environment already. So I would appreciate if that would get a hard look for us. But other than that, I support, I think our local businesses and residents would benefit, and as well as people getting around to see, because some of our roadways are not exactly a straight line, so it would be helpful to many. So I appreciate the suggestions, and those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tong?
The worst thing about this is, is as a kid, people used to stop us on, where I lived on San Walbans, and ask for directions to the Huntington Library, and we always sent them to Hannah. So this is going to, this is going to interfere with a lot of fun.
Well, we're adding one on Lorraine, too.
Yeah.
Would you like a, would you like a sign that says?
Yeah. How, how many of these are actually going in residential areas?
There's, I would say, three of them are.
And which, which three are these?
The one north one on Lombardi and Sierra Madre, the one located near the Mission Village on Los Robles, and there's another one on Los Robles near Huntington Drive.
Okay, and then how many of these are going on our medians? As opposed to, are you posting all of these on medians that are going in residential?
They'll be posted within the city right-of-way, but the ones directly in our medians, you're looking at one, two, three, four, five, about six of them, six or seven.
So today, we're not necessarily approving where we place them. We are approving generally the design and the names of the districts.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Dr. Wong?
So do we have to, you know, go on the design today?
That would be helpful to help us move in the next steps towards mocking up and fabrication. No more questions?
Thank you. Mayor Yudi?
Well, first of all, Aldo and Steph, I can appreciate your leadership with the Economic Development Task Force, and privilege to, you know, eavesdrop on some of the conversations, there's been a lot of work in the background. The question I have is, you know, when you put on your economic development hat, how important are signage programs like this to attracting future businesses?
I think they're essential. You see this in many cities, including Pasadena, Santa Barbara, if you want to create a sense of district identity and to guide people towards these shopping districts, they are essential.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. I just have a few comments myself, having been Economic Development Liaison. I not only appreciate the work of you two, but we have a number of business owners in town who've been extremely dedicated volunteers to this process, and Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, I really appreciated your comments, I know this group has been trying to vet these issues out, and I think today's discussion is helpful. I really like your suggestion of Public Safety Commission perhaps doing a review of all signage in town and seeing if it's right for us. I know it crosses into this agenda item a little bit, but it still reflects these signs, and that perhaps may result in the wayfinding signs being tweaked just a little bit in where they may be located. So I think there's some really, really good decisions being, issues being discussed today. I'm sorry, you're going to respond?
If I may?
Please.
One of the things that we've done so far, and that's a great suggestion, and I actually would recommend that, that we've discussed this program with our Director of Public Works, and he's forwarded his plans to the traffic engineer, and he echoes your concerns as well as far as placements within our city medians as to not... as to not look to block traffic, block visibility, that sort of thing. So, Public Safety can certainly have the next step of this project and before we move forward.
Can I make one follow?
Sure.
I'm sorry, part of the concern is also putting it in the median, you know, the median is zoned or conceptually parked. And so, I would encourage us to really think about placing it on the location or the side that makes the most sense from a public safety and traffic. I'm talking about, you know, the outside, if you will, not in the median proper, because that changes and is really sign blight if you were to see the trees and the nice beds and that type thing, and really just the bare, you know, the signals, if you will. And to make it more on the side, what makes sense logically, I would appreciate that that would be considered something for public safety or your own. As far as aesthetics, I don't want to get into putting signs in the median.
I agree.
I just wanted to clarify, so I think we're on the safety level.
Again, helpful discussion across the board today, thank you. Speaking of which, is there anybody here who would like to comment on this item? I see none, has anyone responded electronically?
We did receive a comment through chat on Zoom from Karina Medilian.
Yes.
And she says, "As a merchant of Mission Street and in the部分Economic Development Committee, I'm excited about the wayfinding signs and the designation of the shopping districts. We feel it's extremely important to create shopping districts that are defined and easy to find. We are extremely supportive of creating walkable neighborhoods that promote family living in San Marino. It is important for us to recognize the importance of developing a strong community in our neighborhood that incorporates our residential and commercial districts. As we move towards the reopening of our shops and restaurants, it's important that we develop San Marino's commercial districts to encourage our residents to support local living, shop local, dine local. We encourage you to support this plan by allowing the wayfinding signs, a great beginning to supporting the development of our commercial districts."
Thank you, anything further that you've received?
No other comments, thank you.
Great. Okay, at this point, I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
I can support this, and I appreciate the efforts, and Director Savantes in clarifying some of it and working with Public Safety and Director Thron for the placement of what seems logical, and coming back to us with that. I think it's most important that we do support our local businesses. I know they're struggling in part, and I hope that this will help them generate interest and keep people in mind. You shouldn't be shopping and dining locally, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tal?
I agree with everything Councilmember Shepherd-Romney said.
Wow.
I do.
Face the day.
Everything she said about this.
Clarification.
Dr. Wong?
Yes, I want to thank Director Savantes for his effort. And I mean, I really like to preserve San Marino and not see any new addition. But I think this is an improvement for our local business, so I can support it, thank you.
Thank you, mayor?
Thank you, I want to thank the Economic Development Task Force, because obviously, there are a lot of subjective things in this decision, and they made, and they did a lot of ping-pongy back and forth with a lot of good and take, and I think arrived in a nice solution, so thanks to them.
Great, thank you, and I support everything that has been said thus far. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask one question?
Please.
And I apologize, do you still, the name Titan, do we have any problem with the school district with that?
That's a, that's a great question.
Well, we could approve it, and then...
That's a good point, why don't we approve and then get in writing that there is concurrence?
Yeah, I mean, it just occurred to me that, I don't think there's going to be a problem, but it's something that before we go out and spend money on our Titan, we should tell them we're going to use it.
Hopefully they'll...
We're asking, and that will help build their brand as well.
Yep.
Right. I mean, that is better than Tony's.
That really is. They go hand in hand. Okay, I move to approve the naming of the various commercial districts, subject to getting approval, and approve the design of the posts and signs, except for the hanging one, and direct staff to proceed through the procurement process for selecting a contractor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you, before we move to item number four, I was going to request a quick break, but if the group wants to keep going, I will excuse myself for a moment, so keep going, okay. And with that, approval of the 2018 State Homeland Security Program Grant for the purchase of automated license plate readers through Vigilant Solutions LLC. Chief Contra, if you'd like to make a presentation, please.
Good morning, Vice, good morning, Vice Mayor.
Green light.
There's no light.
Yeah.
There's no light.
Yeah, turn it off.
No light.
No, there's...
Now is it working?
Yep.
Okay.
You're lit up.
Now the light's off. This light doesn't do it. It's not working again. There we go.
It's working.
Okay, the police department's requesting the approval of City Council for the 2018 SHICAP, or State Homeland Security Program Grant, for the approval of license plate readers. This, to remind the council, this one is similar to the grant that was approved on April last month. The only difference is, this is for three camera systems that have three cameras each, for a total of nine cameras, that will go on the three new police vehicles for a total of $70,199. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, do you have any questions?
Okay, no, I wanted, did want to thank you, and just for clarification, I believe you sent this information to me through the city manager, but I was concerned about the maintenance, but this would include a maintenance component for this purchase for a five-year period, I believe you said, if there's any issues with the cameras. Is that correct?
It's for a four-year period, it's not on five, yes.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the grant application and the funds coming that way. I think that's a huge benefit for everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you, chief.
Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
I will cede my seat to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and based on my review of the agenda item, I have no questions.
Yeah, I have no questions either.
Thank you, thank you for your helpful comment. Does anyone present wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, do we have anyone electronically checking in?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Okay, I will bring this back for discussion. Dr. Wong?
Yes, I just want to thank Chief on the Police Department who are looking to this grant, and I can support this, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tal?
Yes, thank you, Chief, and the Public Safety Commission, that undoubtedly is pressing here to find other people's money, as they say, and I appreciate the effort.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney?
I do, too, I just want to acknowledge that Mark Siegfried also played a role in making this happen, so I think that's wonderful to have the departments working together, trying to save our city money, and it's a great program, a great grant, and I appreciate the support.
Thank you, Mayor Yudi?
No comments, it's a two-hour hour.
He told me I had to bring it in undertone, and I have no comments, and I thank you for finding this money and making this purchase. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager and enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the County of Los Angeles for the 2018 State Homeland Security Program and approve the purchase of nine ALPR cameras with four years of data hosting from Vigilant Solutions LLC offered through the reimbursable state and California Fiscal Year 2018 Homeland Security Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $70,199 in the fiscal year and deemed June 30, 2021, and adds $70,199 of estimated revenues to account 240-00-3202-0000, Homeland Security Grant, inappropriate $70,199 to account 240-30-4613-0000, capitalized equipment from the Homeland Security Grant Fund.
I'll second.
Thank you for the heavy lifting, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Great, at this point, do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution?
No written communications or writing for distribution.
Thank you, this is a time for public comment. Is there anyone present wishing to speak at this point? As a reminder, city council is not legally allowed to engage in discussion on any items that are not on the agenda. Seeing no one present, is there anyone electronically who would like to speak?
We did have one more comment come in.
Please.
Regarding the wayfinding, from Lindsay Hand, who says that she also agrees, she's also a store owner on Mission and agrees 100% with Karina's statement.
Thank you, and with the item having passed, it's nice to hear the weigh-ins, so thank you. Okay, we're ready as a council to talk about future agenda items. Is there any item any council member would like to see on a future agenda? If so, let's see if we've got the support and move it forward.
I just wanted to ask Director Savantes, after the Planning Commission meeting, you discussed objective standards as coming forth. I don't know if that's something that the council needs to put on a request to be on our agenda in order for you to facilitate that process? Or I look to city manager and Director Savantes for direction, whether it's appropriate for me or is it coming in?
I'm sorry, what was the issue on the future agenda?
It is about establishing objective standards for development in the city and adopting those ahead of our HNA, and during this process in anticipation and before we go through the general plans, but to start the process right now with adopting objective city standards that we can then have that as a basis.
And I think there's a response that someone is going to, I said, now, Aldo, what's your head?
Yes, and so, as I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, I've already begun the process of drafting objective standards with respect to R1 uses in the C1 zone, as well as looking to codify our design review guidelines and our commercial design guidelines. That way, the architectural elements found in those documents become objective standards. And so, that will help protect our commercial and residential areas with respect to the possibility of state legislation acting upon, you know, how we can develop our city. So, I'm not sure whether there's direction needed, I've already begun working on that. And so, we could certainly have a discussion during a special meeting with the council to identify what those ideas look like and whether to proceed forward with those.
Thank you, I would like to bring it forward sooner rather than later, because I know we're caught up with so many, but I'd like to see that.
And I know this will be part of a very significant discussion that council will be having in general in preparation for October, so perhaps once we get moving, that timeline will really be helpful to us, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if there are no additional items we'd like to see agendized, I will now adjourn both the adjourned regular meeting and the special meeting, thank you. Appreciate it.